All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, June 15, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introduction to board members. To my far left, we have Paul Amitucci, Jerry Graybill, myself, Michael LaRue, and Phil Roy. We also have Terry Wilson, the Assistant to the Town Planner and Code Enforcement. We also have Lee J. Feldman and Hannah Boni from SMPDC. First is the public hearing for Site Plan Review, Stormwater, Road Improvements, and Public Recreational Area Sawmill Hill in Molton Street, U-174, R1 and RP Zone, Town of Burwick. If you want to just come up and give us a quick description.
Yep, that should be fine.
I am Mike Zarba, representing SLR Consulting. Done the design for the Town of Burwick for their stormwater improvement and road improvements on Molton Street, parts of First, Second, and Copeland Road as well, or Copeland Street. Basically, the project entails reconstruction of the majority of all of Molton Street from Sawmill Road up to Second Street, and improvements particularly to stormwater outfall number 007 under the MS4 program and all of that area of Molton Street. The parts of Second, First, and Copeland that are included in this project also drain water to that existing 18-inch outfall that exists on Molton Street on the park property that's at the downhill side of Molton Street near Salmon Falls River. Particularly, in front of the planning board, obviously, for the shoreline zone portion of it, which is really the stormwater improvement side of things, and the design for that has some stormwater components to it. I call it a detention pond, it's really a bio retention facility that will catch the water as it comes down from all the streets that were named in this entire system, will drain through this biofiltration system, which is a treatment facility for water quality improvements, particularly for nitrogen, phosphorus, those kinds of items. There are pretreatment facilities to this particular facility as well that pick up things like sediments, sands, and grits prior to trash, other things that floatables that exist in the stormwater system are picked up prior to discharging into the biofiltration system, and then the water's filtered through this biofiltration system, which substantially is a basin with mulch at the bottom of it that allows the water to filter through it at a fairly high rate for the most part, but it also is very effective at treatment of those nitrogen and phosphorus-type chemicals or facility, items that get picked up in the stormwater. It then discharges to a plunge pool and effectively eventually to the Salmon Falls River, which is where it currently is going today. So, but I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Yep, anyone in the public wants to raise their opinion? Okay. What? No, this is just a public hearing. So, okay. All right, so no one moved forward. I'll close that public hearing. Next is a public comment. Anyone else to speak in the public comment? Okay, moving along to approval of minutes for May 18th and June 1st.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
I will second that motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I approve May 18th, not the first.
So, let's just do them separate. So, you want to make a motion for just May 18th?
Just May 18th, that they get approved.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is the June 1st minutes.
I will make a motion that we approve them as drafted.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
With one abstaining? Okay, thank you. All right, moving along. Old business, Site Plan Review, Stormwater, Road Improvements, and Public Recreational Area Sawmill Hill and Molton Street, U-174, R1 and RP Zone, Town of Burwick. It's you again.
Well, being as I just did the presentation for it, I'd be happy to rerun through it again, but I'm happy to answer any further questions. I guess I should note, there was a resident that called in, I believe, and stopped into the office, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure exactly which office, but got ahold of James as well regarding a stormwater pipe off of First Street, which actually is beyond the limits of this particular project. There's another cross pipe that's about, I'd say about 50 feet further down First Street from where our project ends. It does eventually tie into the same system, but it's separate, meaning there's no direct catch basin ties to it, and it was not, you know, part of our survey component or part of the scope of our project simply because it's beyond the first catch basin down First Street, and therefore, it wasn't, you know, included in our project. But nonetheless, I think she had, you know, made it, you know, knowing that there was some, a clogged pipe maybe across the street there, which I didn't look at it before the meeting, and it does look like there's maybe an inlet side of it that needs to be either cleaned out, or, you know, it's covered over with silt right now. So, can't tell if the pipe's quite functioning though under the road. It's a very shallow pipe, it's actually, you could see the core game metal pipe sticking out of the road on First Street, so I can't tell if it's really functioning or not. It might be crushed or otherwise not functioning currently, but...
Is that something that Public Works could handle, or do, does it need engineering?
No, I think, I think it just needs to be, you know, looked at and maintained. It'd probably be best if, you know, once we got the system tied in, there is a pipe that would, that did look like it's functioning. It's a plastic pipe that comes across the driveway that ties back into the same catch basin that we're replacing and improving, and when that's done, you know, the system should be able to handle the water as long as it gets directed in there. But I gather that the problem is further up her property and/or, you know, further down the road, like I said, from what, you know, our scope included. So, but I did want to just let you know that that had come in regarding this project. I know James and I had had some communications, and she had a phone call and a couple of emails that...
And I did include something in your package regarding that. It's titled Resident Comments?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Just general concerns about the stormwater pool. I know we had discussed it at the site. I just want to make sure it was for the record. I just have concerns, one, about the lifespan of that pool and the recurring cost to the town for maintaining that as designed and making sure it's going to be effective for its lifespan. Do you have any figures on what it might cost annually to maintain and upkeep that?
I could give you a rough number. I would say in the vicinity of, you know, typically in inspection contract or maintenance contract for that, for basically the labor side of it, and I can't really speak to the cost of replacement materials, but typically, the contracts are in, say, the $2,500 to maybe, you know, $6,000, $7,000 range.
Annually?
Depending on the exact components of the system, we basically give the stormwater design to a contractor that's, you know, qualified stormwater consultant, and they can give the town a price on, you know, looking at the components per year. You know, things like replacing the mulch, which is really the most problematic issue, you know, every, every couple of years that may need to get replaced, you know, you're probably looking on the vicinity of, you know, the $5,000 to $10,000 worth of mulch, you know, to be replaced in that biofiltration system. Beyond that, other regular maintenance that your Public Works Department most likely does already, things like vacuuming out the storm components, maybe they contract that, maybe not, but, you know, those are pretty typical for Public Works Departments to, you know, perform on their own. Most of that stuff can be done, you know, with the guidance of the maintenance contractor, you know, in conjunction with your Public Works, or it can be contracted out separately, depending on how you guys, you know, like to, you know, do your budgets.
Yep, Chair.
Along the lines, I think Phil, where you're going with this is, if it's not properly maintained, it's going to cost the town more.
It's going to cost more in the long run, so I want to make sure that we, you know, take into account all the upfront and recurring costs, so we don't create, you know, a financial pitfall for our taxpayers.
I don't know how that can be structured.
That would be a contract with, it sounds like it's a contract with the inspector, if I'm not mistaken?
It's, there's companies out there that do, you know, the inspection work. They're familiar with the types of systems that we've designed, you know, they're DEP-approved items, there are several of them. We happened to choose an ACF environmental at the time, it was, it's now part of Ferguson Waterworks, but they, you know, make this particular biofiltration system that we chose to use. It was, thinking at the time, you know, we had gone through a couple of different options with the town, and that was the system that they, you know, seemed to like the best, at least at that particular time, which is probably in 2020-ish. But it's a good system. We've used it in a couple other locations throughout the state as well. Well-known system, again, approved by DEP as, you know, as a functioning system, but it does need to be properly maintained, like any, you know, stormwater components nowadays, they need to be properly maintained to function. I think it's just, you know, something that the town has to factor in to its, you know, to its annual budget, obviously, but MS4 components, I think you're obligated to be doing that anyways, you know, for, you know, water quality purposes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, one of the things, you know, and I think you partially touched on it, is there this type of inspection and maintenance going on, on a yearly basis now, on any part of the system?
I believe under the MS4 program, Public Works is obligated to produce an annual report with all of their MS4 items, things that they've, you know, roads that they've swept, catch basins that have been cleaned or inspected or otherwise. There's really, right now, there's the other parts of the system, the biofiltration system, you know, doesn't exist, the pretext, which is a, I mentioned about the sand and trash filtration-type pretreatment system. Those currently don't exist in this particular system. There are catch basins that are associated with it right now. I would imagine that those are, you know, pumped or inspected, you know, for functional purposes.
So, it's a required compliance issue.
Similar, these are a little bit more, you know, intense just simply because we've added additional features or infrastructure to it, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Hannah, do you have anything else to add?
Um, no, not at this point. I just wanted to, I guess, one thing, since the last time that we saw this application, we did get comments back from Kristy Rubaska, who was the MS4 Coordinator for Burwick and for the general southern Maine area. We got responses from those, from the applicant, to satisfy those comments, so as far as that is concerned, we're all good to go.
So, next is just approval of the application.
For completeness?
No, just approval. We already did that.
I will make a motion that we approve.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in old business, Amendments to Land Use Ordinance, Subdivision Regulations, Village Overlay District Design Guidelines, Public Hearing to be set for July 20th.
Nope, that would be in the public hearing.
So, this is just a discussion for us to discuss.
Oh, okay. I can talk after?
Uh, no, for the public hearing, we set the public hearing. Yep. So... With all these land use ordinance changes, I don't, Irish isn't here today, so it kind of...
We should probably defer until she's available. I wouldn't want to make any motions without her presence, and she's the one that has to be enforcing those. I think it would be inappropriate on our part, but that's just an opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to hear her.
Okay.
I could, I could talk to a couple of the items for you if you'd like.
Yeah, please, Jack, that'd be nice.
Okay, so, the two parts of the ordinance amendments that I can specifically speak to is the new addition of the automotive convenience store, which is a new use proposed. I drafted that for you a couple of weeks ago, actually, which, it's, everything is on that one sheet, but it's broken down into a couple of component parts. So, the first one is, excuse me, the definition of what an automotive convenience store is right now. You don't have a definition, even though you've had, you know, these newer gas stations with convenience stores allowed in town, so I figured I would draft a definition of what that really is. And it's, as we've got it here, it's a retail operation that provides both the sale of food and household products, along with the sale of petroleum, and EV charging stations for vehicular fueling, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that. The biggest part of this, I think, and it was discussed at the last meeting, is that going along with automotive repair, automotive and motorcycle repair facilities, I kept it in the same zones that those were allowed in, R1, R2, R3, Village Commercial, RCI, and the LR Zone. And I know that some of the comments that were made or concerned about at the last meeting were whether or not it truly belonged in the R1, R2, and R3 Zone. So, I think that's something that's up for discussion for you folks to see if you want to maintain those, that this new use in that zone. I was trying to just be consistent in the sense that I understand the sensitivity around gas stations, except that different parts of town need gas stations, and this was one way to make sure that there were options available for those types of facilities. Also, I drafted Section 8.38, which is automotive convenience store performance standards that would go into Article 8, Section 8.38 for you, and I won't go through all of them. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to read them, but they are all of the types of performance standards that the applicant, any applicant would be required to meet as part of their design criteria. Very quickly, you know, there's, there's dark sky friendly lighting that's required on poles no taller than 15 feet. I know some places like to get to 20, 25 feet, and those are very tall poles, and they disperse a lot more light, so trying to keep them lower would try to keep it more dark sky friendly in the community as a whole. The other thing is down in number, letter I, we're suggesting that all new gas stations would be required to have at least three EV charging stations, so that you can start converting over to having public facilities available for EV charging, other than municipal type of facilities or private homes. So, we've added that. We did suggest that operating hours for the stores would be 6:00 to 11:00, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but that gas filling could occur 24/7. People do drive around at very early morning or during the middle of the night and need petroleum, so we've put that in there. You can certainly modify that if you'd like. We've added that pumps would be no closer than 100 feet from any residents. I think those were the real highlights of this whole use category for you. If you choose to want to move forward with that, and certainly, we can modify it any way you want to after the public hearing. The other piece that I can talk to tonight, I didn't, was not part of drafting some of these other pieces, but after the last meeting, we had the conversation about design standards, and lo and behold, I forgot about it, but back in 2018, I had actually drafted, what you have in front of you is the Town of Burwick Design Guidelines, and it's basically what I discussed with you folks of being able to put together for you, for, for, requiring new developments to meet these types of standards. It's not saying that they have to design or build exactly to them, but it gives the applicants an idea on what we're looking for, for taste and feel. One of the things that James and I talked about was on page, on the first inside page of adding, under applicability, that they not only be, when we drafted them, that we drafted them for the Village Overlay District, but that they be in the Village Overlay District and along the major corridors of Route 4, 236, and 9. That, I think, goes to your concerns, Phil, but I think that this, with adding that, goes to the issue of design criteria along all the major corridors in town. And I think that one of the things that James was considering, and certainly you folks can have a major play or say in that, is that this would become ordinance rather than just guidelines. Guidelines are suggested, here you go, folks, this is what we're trying to design to versus an absolute requiring them to meet these, these types of standards. So, ironically, I did find them in your file, my electronic file at work, and we did do it in 2018, so they've been hanging around, and there's been a major changeover with you folks on the board. There's been changes with us coming and going through various stages of staff turnover, and when I went back to my files, I found it. So, you have already got something that's pretty close to ready to go.
Thanks, Lee J., and if I may, Mr. Chair. I do see, per our last discussion, you actually have the picture in there of the McDonald's in Freeport, and I think you had mentioned another community that has adopted similar standards. What community was that?
Kittery.
Kittery. Would it be within reason, before we put these forth, to, can we get a chop on their verbiage, what each of those towns looks like, and then craft that to make it our own? And the only reason I say that is I think we would be doing a huge disservice to our town and the feel and nature of our small-town community if we allow strip malls and gas stations and stuff that just does not fit in with our country theme and feel of our community. If we can put that in there, I think we're, it's the best interest of the town to keep it looking like a small-country town, as opposed to, you know, box store central.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's a couple of ways to do it. One would certainly be to get their, their documents, and you take a look at them. I can tell you that, since there's no copyright on it, many of the pictures and discussion in this came from the Kittery document. We don't recreate the wheel, there's no secrets here.
There's no shame in shamelessly plagiarizing what already works.
That's right, exactly. So, many of, many, many parts of this document do come from the Kittery, from the Kittery document, but be happy to try and track that down. I looked on their website, and I could not explicitly put my finger on it, but of course, I know the planners down there, and I'm sure I can get my hands on it. And I think the, the other way to do it, because I, I think in general, and you tell me if you're, if I'm wrong, is that, you know, again, many of the pictures are pretty much, this is kind of what we're looking to do, but if we put some additional verbiage in under the General Guidelines A section that talks about making sure that while these photos provide examples of what we're trying to achieve, that utilizing existing development in town as a model would certainly provide that ambiance and feel that you're looking to achieve, so that they're not just, you know, going off and doing something that looks kind of neat and nice, but doesn't necessarily meet Burwick's fabric.
Chair?
Yep. Going along with what Phil said, Lee J., I read North Burwick and South Burwick's land use ordinance last night for convenience stores and gas stations. They have some good words in those that we should be looking at in Burwick as well to incorporate.
Got it. We can do that.
I'd be glad to share some of what I have with you or whoever. I have a lot of notes.
Um, I would say probably the easiest for me to get them from you, well, I, of course, have their ordinances. We are a contract planner for South Burwick, as you know, and I do a lot of work with North Burwick, so we have their ordinances. I can either just get it that way, or if you've got particular notes or issues that you want addressed, pass them to Irish and have her get those to me.
Okay.
Will do.
Consensus is we're going to wait for Irish for the next meeting to discuss all the other amendments?
Yeah, also, I think it's probably good to get the public comment out as well before we start diving in, so we can see what's coming in from, from...
Well, we'd have to set the public hearing at that point, so we would have to have Irish...
We still have to have a good draft before we do that.
Well, we have our draft right here. This is our draft, but if we want to discuss it with Irish, we'd be moving the public hearing one more meeting.
Okay.
I think we wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we didn't include her. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. We can wait. So, that's basically that for now, right, Lee J?
Yes.
Okay.
I, just before we leave this entire topic, one thing that just stuck out to me when we were talking about, you know, page one of this automotive convenience store additions, 5,000 square feet of retail space for the convenience store, that is a big building.
Actually, thank you for pointing that out. I failed to, I failed to discuss that. That was a number that I pulled just from my head at the time, but Hannah and I had talked about it internally, and actually, I don't have a concern even dropping it to, like, you know, 3,000, 3,500, maybe even smaller if you want, but that was just a, like a placeholder at this point, but certainly, yes. It was much larger, and I tried to look at aerial photos of the combi up on the school street corner, just to get a feel for how big that is, and I think, you know, dropping it to no more than 3,000 square feet would be certainly doable for you folks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, would that be something that everyone would be in agreeance with? We set that down to 3,000, no longer, larger than 3,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's adjust that.
Set my comment.
Okay, all right, you'll send them to Irish, and then she'll send them out?
Yeah.
Okay, so moving along, we have Site Plan Review, Commercial Storage, One Blackmore Road, R6818, Blackmore Road LLC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I know I have given my spiel a few times here now, so I'll just do sort of a quick overview unless you want all of the sort of ins and outs of the proposal again.
Yeah, just a quick overview should be fine.
So we are in the rural commercial industrial district proposing many commercial storage units, fourteen thousand square feet. And this is in addition to the existing permitted marijuana, medical marijuana cultivation that's on site. The existing use is to remain in addition to the proposed many storage units. Stormwater is taken care of in two different infiltration basins. We will be applying for our main DEP permit. We're still in the notification period right now, so we have not submitted at this time, but we will be doing so very soon here. In our previous conversation, we had discussed the Burwick Fire Chief requesting Knox Box on the gate. And the police chief had no law enforcement issues and the board had asked us to notify South Burwick Board as well as their responders. We've sent packages to South Burwick at this time. Actually, one of them was to Hannah Bonin for South Burwick, and we have not received any feedback from South Burwick at this time that has been submitted to them. So the land use is allowed via conditional use permit. And the second conditional use permit that we're requesting is for just under thirty-three hundred square feet of disturbance within the seventy-five-foot stream protection zone. This is to fill about a hundred and thirty yards to create a conveyance swell within the buffer which you see is this darker hatch area here. There is no proposed impervious surface within this seventy-five-foot stream protection buffer. As part of our main DEP application, we're applying for the stormwater management law permit. But in addition to that, we also have to file a permit by rule for Section Two, which is activities adjacent to protected natural resources. So that would be DEP reviewing our impact within the seventy-five-foot stream protection district. So at this point, I can go through or answer any further questions about the proposal. Or I can also go through the conditional use permit items for both requests as well.
If I may, yeah, Mr. Chair. I just had a question about the thirty-three hundred square foot backfill that you're requesting a variance or a waiver?
A conditional use permit.
Conditional use.
Sorry, we we are not requesting any variances or waivers, just the two conditional use permits, one for the land use and one for the swell within the seventy-five-foot stream protection.
Hannah, do you have any comments for this?
Oh, hello. Only comment that I have, the last meeting that we had for this project, we left it at sending out the project for a third-party engineering review. We did, after some further discussion with the applicant, decide that the permits from the DEP would essentially be duplicative of any engineering review that we would be getting, so we didn't feel that it was necessary to send it out for that review. So at this point, we are all set as far as that is concerned. No other comments, though.
Okay, and then our actions tonight would just be approval of those two.
Correct.
Conditional uses?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask that he identify himself, please?
My name is Kevin Pullen.
Thank you.
My apologies.
So the first motion, I'll make a motion that it's the variance for the stormwater.
Three thousand.
My apologies, conditional use permit, no, no variance.
Say that again?
There's two conditional use permits, no variances or waivers.
Yeah, so the conditional use for the stormwater, right? Is that what it is, the stormwater? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve that.
I will.
Go ahead.
I'll second. Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Okay, second is the conditional use for the storage facility, right? Okay.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second up.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving along, new business, final plan, major subdivision, Woodland Pond, Alley Pond, R seven Lot two and Johnny Lane, R eight six dash six, Altis Engineering.
All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, I'm Eric Sari from Altis Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. I also have Troy Williams and Isaiah Plant with me. Since the last time we met, we have obviously filed for final approval. In doing so, we amended the plans to address engineering comments. I believe you have a copy of that in the packet. I think we've got everything there. That's pretty much it. There was some correspondence between IF&amp;W and the town manager. We're going to have a site walk with IF&amp;W at some point. We think it's going to be next week, but it hasn't been finalized yet.
It's going to be next week.
Okay, we haven't got an invite.
As far as I know, it's the twenty-first or the twenty-second.
I I saw those two dates passed around, but nobody actually confirmed.
Right.
Yeah.
It's in between those two days.
It's sometime next week. So, yeah. So we don't expect anything to change from their prior recommendations. Nothing's really changed out there. We know we've had a black racer sighting, which is kind of what we expected. This is black racer and and Blanding Turtle neighborhood, as we've already discussed. So that's it in a nutshell. Guys, have any questions about it?
And the DEP visit, that's just a follow-up to to verify to verify what was already discovered or just to make sure there's nothing new out there?
I I think it's more just because there's been a new sighting. They want to go out and look at the site again, just just to be sure. They also want, because it was directly a request from the town, they wanted to make sure they were being responsive to you guys or the town in general. All right.
Hannah, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing for me at this point. The only major, I don't want to say major, the only major items, I said major again, from the last meeting really, were just the environmental concerns that we were still talking about, and that's being covered with the site walk next week.
Okay.
So no motions on this. We're waiting on the committee.
We could make a motion on this. What are the actions we could take today, Hannah?
You can, if you want to wait for the results of the site walk, you can. I don't know if you have to officially table it. I don't know if Lee Jay's still on or not, but essentially wait until the next meeting for the approval to wait for the results of that site walk if anything comes from it. Or you can, in theory, give a final approval conditional on any input. Results from the site walk if they require any changes.
It'd be prudent to wait. I wonder what your thoughts are.
Fine, either way, it doesn't matter.
I'd like to wait. I make a motion that that, oh, sorry.
Either way, it doesn't matter.
I'd like to make a motion that we we wait until we have all the information in front of us prior to granting any approval.
I agree and second.
Okay, further discussion?
Just for an official action on that, it'd probably be best to, since you're going to wait, Phil, if you make that a tabling motion.
Okay, I will make a motion that we table it until after we have the DEP information.
For the IF&amp;W information.
Oh, the IF&amp;W.
Yeah.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Fine.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
All right. Moving along, preliminary plan, major subdivision, Worcester Road, R thirty-two seventeen dash E, R two zone, Providential Equity Development LLC.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I commend you guys for cruising along. I didn't think I was going to get to speak until like eight o'clock. Yeah, for the record, Mike Sudak at our engineering here on behalf of Providential Equity Development. I have Pat Carroll here with me tonight. And this is our first meeting for preliminary subdivision. I'd be happy to give a brief overview. I know you guys saw this at Sketch probably a month and a half ago, but I can revisit if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay. So overall plans in front of you. This is seventy-seven acre parcel out in the R two zone, right on the edge of the R three zone, Worcester Road, just south of the Cranberry Hill intersection. And what we're proposing is a cluster residential development, single-family lots, fourteen lots in total, developing about nineteen acres, so that leaves about fifty-eight of the seventy-seven for open space, about three-quarters of the parcel. Simple travelway, about fourteen hundred feet long, ending in a cul-de-sac, designed to collect the road standards, which is a little bit higher than this level of subdivision would typically require. It's usually for two hundred trips or more, and this is a hundred and forty. All the lots are going to be individual private wells and individual subsurface wastewater disposal systems. We've done a full high-intensity soil survey, test pits blanketed all over the site. Let's see, wetland delineation was done over the winter. Vernal pool study was done in April. What else do I have? I can switch sheets here. So stormwater management, for those of you that went on the site walk, it's a pretty nice and clean site. It all pitches towards Worcester Road. So towards the beginning of the development, stormwater is going to be accomplished by roadside swell on either side of the travelway. And all that's going to be collected into a single underdrained soil filter right in the corner of Lot one, which is the bottom-left lot there as you're looking at the screen. So because of the amount of impervious we're generating, this is a stormwater management law permit, so we trigger that tier. We've provided our notice of intent to file and if tonight's meeting goes smoothly, we're going to get that out the door tomorrow to start that forty-five-day review period, so we'll have that in hand here after forty-five days, hopefully. What else do I have? Since the application package went out, we received a sign-off from the Historic Preservation Commission. Nothing of historical archaeological significance. Received our sign-off from the Natural Areas Program, no plant species of concern. We haven't received anything from IF&amp;W yet. We pinged them again at the beginning of the week. There's a species list that I think was in your packet. The only one of concern is the northern long-eared bat, which is just tree clearing limits for the pups. I think that's about all I have. We're not requesting any waivers and, yeah, we're for you tonight for preliminary completeness, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, only concern I had, and it stems from the site walk, is there's a man-made drainage ditch waterway that goes right through Lots six and Lot seven, and it appears to flow from north to south.
Correct.
Which would have that outfall on the abutting property to the south. And my only concern is if you're doing well in septic, how, and I'm not an engineer and I'm probably expressing how just how naive I am to how all this works, but I I just have concerns about how we are going to prevent any potential contamination in that stream by putting a housing lot with a well and a septic on either of those lots and how it's going to affect out of butter. That would be my biggest concern. And and if there there is any potential for that, is that something DEP would chime in on? And and if they do, would you guys be amenable to to maybe making that green space to to facilitate being able to do this without affecting that that runoff and and your abutment to the south?
Mm-hmm. It's a fair question. Yeah, so we we did discuss this in the field and yeah, took a look at that channel. It's a fair point. I think Lot seven is more manageable of the two of them, just because that swell doesn't necessarily bisect it. Lot six is, yeah, kind of a tricky envelope, especially considering you need to have both the building envelope and your septic and well all contained within the same lot. I think the route I would prefer to go, and of course, happy to have a discussion on it, would be maybe to have a almost like a stormwater easement, you know, not a not a developed stormwater easement, but an existing stormwater easement that we offset from either side of that swell. And that kind of limits what can what can take place in there. You know, there's there's a couple other options that we can go. Really, I I would hesitate to want to declare that whole side open space just because of the limitations I have with making the same number of lots fit with the geometry of of the remaining land. You know, there's a couple other things we can do. We could pursue like a a shared septic system, maybe have Lot six receive its its sewer service from one of the abutting lots, or we can.
Would it would it be at all even reasonable to possibly, I don't know, can you shift lots and then keep that between the lots, that way that you're you've got less of a occurrence of a potential contamination of that waterway and to the abutment to the south?
Yeah, also, on this, as I remember this particular drainage area, and I asked a question about it as well, and I was told that it was man-made, that it's not any natural thing. So could it be diverted into a different different way so that it becomes easier on on the on the south side homeowners than than it is now?
Yeah, I mean, part of our part of our stormwater analysis is to demonstrate that the the flow and the developed condition is going to be less onto the abutting properties, which we are demonstrating that. I know I discussed it in the field, but you know, that that channel we're we're endeavoring, we're we're going to keep it hydraulically separate from from all of the impervious that we're creating, so the roadside swell that's picking up all the impervious from this road is going to be disconnected from everything that that existing channel receives. That that channel receives quite quite a substantial amount of forest from all the way up on Cemetery Road. Comes down through the woods and I think, you know, the farmers back in the day cut it because they didn't want the sheet flow continuing continuing into their fields. So we're going to provide that that level of certainty, but you know, I can I can take a look to to kind of transition back to Mr. Roy's question. I can take a look at trying to make, you know, what would that be, Lots four, six and eight? A little bit more reasonable of a building envelope and and utility envelopes, somewhat limited by, I believe, your minimum lot width.
Setbacks and.
I I think it's actually lot width is the limiting factor here.
Quick question for you, Mike. How far away are the test pits? I see them on the on the thing, but like, what's the scale? Like, what's the distance between those those test pits and that man-made waterline?
Let's take a look here. Probably around I'd say forty to fifty feet, but they are downgrade, so if you're thinking of the nitrate plume going into that, it'd be going the opposite way.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. More than likely, the wells would be up higher than the septic, of course, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, required to have them a hundred feet apart. If we run into constraints, we can case the well a specific way to reduce that radius, but but right now, yeah, we have that hundred-foot radius and we can accommodate that on on all the lots. Certainly something I can I can look into, though. Maybe getting a little bit more creative with the geometry, but I I am really.
Me personally, I would hate to see you have to share a septic on someone else's lot. I'd rather it be one on each one.
Yep.
Because then you're just opening up a whole bunch of worms when it comes to the.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, also with the shared septic, there are issues for lenders for mortgages on shared septics. shared septics. So there are some programs that are not allowed because of shared septic systems, so...
It's not an avenue we...
...open to all lenders.
Yep.
I mean, what you have now already conforms to what our ordinances ask for.
Right, you know, I can kind of understand the hesitance over just how it looks on the page. You know, I believe the design we presented functions, you know, maybe that lot has a little bit more scrutiny when it comes to specific field locating. You know, there's going to be less variance in where that septic system has to go, where that well has to go. But yeah, I think we can make it work.
Is that something IF&amp;W will chime in on when they respond to you, or is that not even on?
That they would just be...
That's not their lane?
No.
Okay.
Right.
Dangerous. Yep. Hannah or Lee J., do you have anything to add?
Um, yes, I have a couple questions. I also, I know we haven't heard back from IF&amp;W, but I did do a quick search of the beginning with Habitat maps, and there's nothing of concern as far as these maps show in the general vicinity of the subject area. So I'm doubting that we will get much of a response as far as positive for any endangered species in the area from IF&amp;W. Obviously, we will still wait for that, but just from that standpoint. Also, just a couple questions. Oops, I just clicked away from my report. What are your plans, and this may be a little bit premature, but what are your plans as far as dedication for the open space and the ownership and management of that?
Yeah, it's a fair question. So there's going to be an association that's created for the maintenance of, you know, everything within stormwater easements, the road, and the open space would be incorporated into that. The plan right now, you know, we're not proposing any, I guess, hardscape out there. It'll be for passive recreation, and by your ordinance, all the lots have to be within a thousand feet of that to accommodate that access, so we are keeping that. And there's direct access for everyone directly off the right-of-way, so no one has to go through anyone else's lot to get to it. I mean, I think that's all I have for you right now.
That answers my question. I wasn't sure, based on your application, if you were planning on an HOA or not, and if there was any indication of land trust easement or anything like that on the open space. So that answers that question. Um, let's see, you had noted that fire protection was to be determined. Is there any update on your plans for that?
No, I mean, I believe the only correspondence I've had with the fire chief was just his sign-off on the cul-de-sac design. I would assume we'd need to sprinkle the homes and have that supplied from the well, so we can add some language as we get further along to have an FPA thirteen in all the houses. I forget off the top of my head if I have to show where the closest hydrant is, because I don't know where that is off the top of my head. But anyway, yeah, that's our plan moving forward.
Um, also...
A waste.
Um, oh, is this new road that you're building, is this going to remain private or will it be for public acceptance?
Is the road going to remain private?
Yeah, Pat Carroll from Providential Equity. It's going to remain private for the time being, with the hopes that the town will take it over at the outset of the project.
All right.
We're building it to town spec.
To comment on that, the town, I don't think is going to be accepting any cul-de-sac roads right now. They're looking for only throughways to adopt. So I'm not too sure on that, but that's, I'm pretty sure of that.
Okay. Very good. Good note of it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Hannah, would we, would it be within our purview to ask for independent review just of that waterway and the effects of how far we should have setback septic from that, or is that beyond our scope?
Um, I would say that is within your scope, but I'll admit, I didn't fully follow that conversation. Lee J. looks like he has something to say.
Yeah. I was just going to jump in. I mean, Hannah does a fine job, and I don't need to take her thunder away. But on the septic system issue, as long as they show a hundred-foot separation, most plans will end up showing circles between the septic system location and the well location, as long as those meet that standard, which is the state standard for separation between the two, they satisfy that unless you feel that there's something else going on that may require further separation at your level. You could do that.
My only concern, go ahead, Lee J., sorry.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, while I had the floor, the other thing I would suggest is that even if the town is not in a position, policy-wise currently, on accepting cul-de-sac roads, if it's going to be built to town spec, town spec with the assumption that it would be petitioned at some point in the future, I think you'll want to make sure that you have a third-party inspection done during construction to make sure that all compaction and lifts and everything are done according to the town spec.
So, Lee J., my concern, I understand the well and the septic setback, but as I look at Lot Number Six, I'm just, again, not an engineer, but Lot Six, I'm just having a hard time seeing how they would get a house on there with the appropriate separation for the septic and the well, and still preserve that waterway without potentially contaminating, you know, one of their neighbors are having a very wet basement. That's, you know, just trying to be proactive instead of reactive.
Oh, yeah, no, you have, you know, you're within your purview to ask those questions and to look to something else. I'm not familiar with the plan. It's been Hannah's project, and I let her go with those, so I can't really comment specifically on that lot and the design, but certainly from a policy standpoint, you have the authority to request alternate locations if you want, or further separation on that particular lot if you want to do that.
Would you be amenable to having a third-party chime in on that as far as the design for that lot? And if they're not, if they don't see that as a feasible way to maintain that waterway and be able to put a home on there, would you guys be amenable as a second course of action to changing the plan on that lot specifically?
Thank you for the discussion, both Hannah and Lee J. I think our preference would be to switch the order of that. You know, we're at preliminary completeness. You guys are going to get a few more whacks at this. I think I can maybe adjust one lot line and make it not perpendicular, make that lot area a little more accommodating, and you know...
Well, also, since that's a man-made thing, you could move that over, correct?
Which was my point.
Yeah. I don't know how, right now, we're not filing with the Natural Resources Protection Act. We're in the exempted tier for wetland impacts.
Okay.
That's considered a wetland, even a man-made wetland.
Right.
So I would be hesitant to guess how they would see that, but I think...
I mean, even if you could just move it around, and it ends in the same spot, but just moving it around that little bit, I mean, that would probably satisfy all of our thoughts.
I think the way that I'd prefer to handle it is, you know, as we move forward, I can come back with a slightly different configuration for those three abutting lots up top, Four, Six, and Eight. And if, you know, at the next go-around, when we're prospectively up for preliminary approval, if you're still unsatisfied, then we can have that third-party review, or we can make that endeavor with DEP.
I think that would be a win for everybody. I mean, even yourself. I mean, if I'm buying a house, do I want to buy a house where, you know, I got a waterway running through my yard?
These are all going to be beautiful.
Yeah, they're going to be gorgeous houses, but if your basement's wet, you know, all year round, I mean, just trying to, you know, one, good steward to your customers, but more so, good stewards to the environment.
But they're not open waterways. When you're done, they're actually encased, aren't they?
That one's going to be an open waterway that has an open-bottomed culvert preserving the existing channel, is the intent right now. So there's going to be your elevated roadway, a roadside swale that's then has adequate cover between a culvert to preserve that cup channel.
Got it.
So they're going to be disconnected from...
Yeah, I was under the impression that was totally covered and buried.
Just for the portion of the road's going over it.
Okay, got it.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So with the idea of changing those three lots around, that kind of changes on if it's complete or not? Is that correct?
Vent, well, I'll let Hannah go first.
Or is this something that they could do after we find it completed?
Yeah, you can find the application complete at this point, since they didn't provide everything they need to, it just may not physically work. So you won't be approving the preliminary plan necessarily at this point, since we're still working on that, but you can find the application complete.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we find this application complete.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Okay. Next is, we found it complete.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Hannah.
And now is setting the date for the public hearing. The public hearing sets, we're probably into late July, because therefore, we're not going to be holding our meeting. So I think that is... That's going to be the twentieth of July. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll schedule the public hearing for the twentieth of July.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the second public comment.
Hi, Karen Mullane of Forty-Seven Alley Pond Road. Unfortunately, the developer has left the meeting early. He chose to leave early, and I was hoping that the vote that was, started to be discussed at the last meeting, to have another public hearing, was going to be reopened, but that wasn't brought up, and he has chosen to leave early. I'm still going to ask that vote be taken to have the...
We can't vote on it right now because he's gone.
By choice.
But we can discuss that in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. There's that. Since Sunday, I've reported to the state six sightings of endangered species. One of them is a new spot of a black racer nest, probable nest. Unless you dig it up and see, you don't know for sure. I've been in contact with Derek Yorke. He confirmed it's probably a nest. So I have pictures of the snake going underground, so beautiful, four black racer snakes and two landing turtles, so just since Sunday, which is kind of awesome, so they're still there. And I would request that the town, the board, please read the subdivision regulations, Article eleven, eleven point eight, just talking about protecting the environment for the endangered species and whatnot. It's pretty interesting where this is very well-known and documented, what's there, just to help protect that, because otherwise, they're on their way out. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always ladies first. Rick Raines, eighteen Carolyn Drive. I have no questions that would require the developer to answer them, but I do have a couple of comments, one procedural one. In asking for documentation of public records that I had not been given at the last meeting to that date, I was told a week's timeframe would be good to get them, and I've received a very small percentage of what I had asked for, and these should be public records. These should be things that the town has on file for this project, and I have not received them.
What pieces specifically?
I have not received a completed application from the applicant. There's a blank one in his first packet back in February, but there's no completed one. There is no wetland delineation specifically. However, I did receive correspondence from the engineer in response to several questions that I had, and one of them was about wetland delineation, and what the information I was given and the information I found in all of their documents, there appears to be four separate wetland delineations dated different dates by different people, and one of the concerns I have is if you look at all of their maps from the very beginning of this project to their final application, the wetland sketches don't change. And I don't know how you can have four wetland delineations by people and never have the wetlands change on the maps. My understanding is they put flags up, go back to their computer with their GPS coordinates, and create a map. Never changes. In my correspondence with the engineer, his responses generated more questions for me. So when he's present next time, I will bring them up in the form of possibly opening a public hearing so we could have a discussion, because I know we can't without him here. And then just another point, not a question, just to let you know, in their watershed plans on all four of their watershed maps, WS one through four, in their first packet, on the west side of the Alley Pond Road part, they show a swale bringing the water all the way down to Karen's property, and then they show it ending there, and the water just filtering out over her property. And this was not caught by the third-party engineer either, and in my question to the engineer about that, he said, "Oh, well, I guess we'll put a swale in." Now, Karen's property is only five feet from the road and three feet below the level of the road, so that will be an engineering feat to get a swale in there without possibly moving the road. But my point, more importantly, is if this hadn't been caught by me, their watershed would be all through Karen's property, which is already full of sand from current erosion. So when I first stood in front of you months ago, what I said was I was here to support Karen and her environmental concerns, and to make sure we followed the rules, that the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. I stand here now with more questions than I've ever had about this project that I'd like to bring up in the appropriate forum, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you. Is it with it on?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Any else for public comment? All right, I'll close that, and next is informational items.
I have one.
Okay.
I know during our last meeting, we discussed with the town manager the possibility of getting a statement or statement of capacity from both the water and the sewer district. We did get an email from the town manager, including both of those departments, and they invited us for a tour, and I think a tour would be fantastic, but the problem is it doesn't address the reason. I feel like we, as the planning board, need a written statement from both the water and the sewer department to address three things. One would be, what is the current capacity that they are operating at for both producing water, drinking water, and disposal of sewage? The second piece is, what available capacity is going to exist after we finish the final phase of the Edge? And then, thirdly, I would like to know what their demand signal for each organization is, where they're going to need to request additional capacity as our town grows, and I think that's a huge valuable piece that we're going to need as a planning board in order... need as a planning board in order to approve future product, future projects that come before us. Because if we don't have that information, we're really putting the cart before the horse and, and we're setting us up for an infrastructure failure. And, and when we get towards that demand signal, that's when we need to be looking for grant money and, and those kind of things to develop the, the facilities we need to support the town. And I really feel like, maybe, maybe I didn't emphasize enough that we really wanted that in writing from, from the managers of each of the facilities. I, I would love to schedule a tour. I'd like to see how, I guess they process that stuff, but beyond that, we really, that's a tool that we need in order to be able to do our job effectively and take care of the voters.
I know that the sewer and water, we might just have to kind of creep in on a selectman's meeting when they give out their reports. We might have to just go and follow and check out what they have to say, or maybe even comment on it and try and get some information at that point, too.
And I think the selectman will provide great information, but I think that...
Well, I'm saying with the, the water and the water treatment and the, the water plant and the treatment, they actually come and do a report. So if they're actually here, then we'll try and get it all together.
I got you. Okay.
That might be the better...
That's fair. I just think we need to have something in writing from now. So one, there's a, there's a level, there's a level of accountability, other than, hey, we're taking a shot in the dark.
That would also get it on the record.
Correct. That's my whole point. That's my whole point.
Getting it on the record is the first thing, yeah. Anything else? We've had two people leave the planning board, so there is going to be two available positions if anyone's interested. We're just putting it out. The town will be sending something out for that information, but we just, I just found out today that two people have left, so there is some openings available. That's all I have.
I, I have one more, one last item. I did not get picked up for select board, and I want to thank the voters of Burwick for getting out there and, and voting as they did. I do want to apologize to our town clerk, because she did put a lot of time in. And unfortunately, due to a human error that was beyond her control on a very long workday, as many of our public servants had, there was some misinformation that was put out. And I was told that I had actually won the election, and a short time after, I found out I had not. So initially, I had asked for recount, but after talking to our, the person that worked for our town, they took ownership of that. And I am fully comfortable with the count and the integrity of the vote. There was an exceptionally human moment, and I am looking forward to working with our newly-elected selectman and doing the best work we can for the town of Burwick. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there for public comment.
Okay. Next is the adjournment.
There's nothing, no items for further consideration from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Burwick Town Hall. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night.